Is absent today. Just a reminder, avoid embarrassment, silent your phone. If you're going to speak today, there's a sign up in the back corner of the room. We ask that you, we have your names for the record. It is required for public record. And we also have absentee voting going on next door. So there are state laws prohibiting the disruption of voters and election workers and prohibiting campaign material for or against any person or issue in or near the polling places, which I believe is defined as 100 feet from the door of the building. Copies of the statute can be found around the building, including the bulletin board outside these chambers. Can I ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Anybody from the public that like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? All right. Commissioners, any comments or any items on the consenting agenda you want addressed? Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention of the fact that this month marks the 40-year anniversary of employment with the county on Bill Hoskins, the director of our museums. We greatly appreciate Bill's commitment to the county, and I think we're very thankful for his leadership. He does a great job. He runs the facilities very well and manages his staff and many, many budgets. And I have had the privilege of working with him now for a couple of years and really appreciate his expertise, so.
Ironically, he has a lot of history with the museum.
Forty years. That's a lot of history.
Forty years, definitely. Congratulations, Bill. All right. Look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
That is my motion.
Second.
Motion and second, call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to regular business. We have a public hearing and second reading for the adoption of an ordinance providing for the establishment of speed zones on the Minnehaha County Highway System. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groen Highway Superintendent. This is part two of the item that we brought last week for the first reading. We're proposing adjusting the speed limits at three locations in the county. If you're still in favor of it this week, I ask that you approve the ordinance and we'll get these speed limits changed.
All right. This is a public hearing, so on public hearings, we have an order. We take proponents of the proposed ordinance change first, so any proponents of the speed limit changes as they are proposed. Any opponents? No need for rebuttal. Turn it over to the commission for discussion and action.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on, a public hearing to brief the 2025-2029 Transportation and Bridge Improvement Plan, Jacob.
Morning Commissioners, Jacob Mars, County Highway Department. This is a five-year plan as required by our Bridge Improvement Grant Program administered by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. The next item goes in conjunction with this. It's the approval of the plan by the commission, if you so see fit. And I will just run through my plan for you, a little longer than what our highway items usually are. So our plan goes from 2025 to 2029. These are the different elements required by the DOT. We must have the five-year plan, certification by the commission, follow the guidelines set forth by the DOT, and provide updates on last year's projects. Couple of different items that are essential elements.
Can you go back to that?
I can.
How often do we do the surface evaluation? Is that every other year?
It is every three years.
Every three years? Oh, there it is. Thank you.
We've done it in 14, 17, 20, and 23. And these are, these are how our PCI scores have come back. The 4% backlog would be roads or 2% that have, that have failed, that need to be reconstructed immediately, or you're going to risk getting a lot of complaints. So we like to keep that number at zero. It's not always financially feasible to keep it at zero, but that's our goal. Couple other elements for the bridges would be their location, their structure number, length with type, sufficiency rating, which the sufficiency rating is similar to the PCI score for, for a bridge. If they're posted, when they were built, year improvement, last type of improvement. And here are a couple of other items. And these are either included in the plan or show up in this year-by-year spreadsheet I'm going to show you here in a bit. Project list must include location, type of improvement, funding source, design cost, construction cost, and the year of construction. And then if you, the biggest part for us, highway, reason to do this is to be eligible for the big program. So we have projects shown in every single year. Anything we think might become eligible within the next year, we have to have in this plan. So the last couple of years of this project really get heavy and loaded, I guess you could say. But the first couple of years, we know what we're going to do. In the last couple of years, we're trying to plan for as many possibilities as we can. These are our expected projected revenues and expenses. You can see we start out with a, with a fairly good end-of-year fund balance, and we slowly trickle into the negative. We have two federal grants that we plan to apply for. One is the Bridge Improvement Program, and the other one is the, it used to be the RACE Grant. It's going to be some, some form of that. The BIP application is for three structures just east of Dell Rapids. And then the, the RACE Grant, which is by a different name now, is for Maple Park from Veterans Parkway into SD 11 on the south side of Brandon. So those in conjunction with putting a lot of projects in '28 and '29 is what makes this dip into the negative. We don't fund roads and bridges with property taxes. As you know, we don't get any money from the general fund. They're all quote-unquote user fees. And we have managed our budget pretty well over the past few years and try to maintain a healthy end-of-year fund balance. This is an update of our 2024 projects. The road south of Colton, 5.3 miles of rural reconstruction, last year in '23 replaced the culverts and the two bridges that were out there. This year, next week, we're having a punchless meeting. We're finishing up our in-slope grading and roadway widening. And then next year in '25, you'll see we're going to do a new surfacing on that roadway. 337-130 is planned to start next week. This is a township structure in Red Rock Township. 330-26 is north of Sherman, about 3.4 miles. And this is a bridge deck overlay. This is a Bridge Improvement Grant that we were awarded. The last portion of the overlay was completed last week, and the road should be open in about two weeks.
So we can get a bridge replaced yet this year? I mean...
Yes. So this 337-130 is a, is a small structure. I want to say it's 24, 25 feet long, and the contractor is putting in a precast box culvert. So that project should be three to four weeks. And it's on a gravel road, so we don't have any surfacing to do after. It's just laying gravel down.
So when is a culvert a bridge?
A culvert is a bridge when, from abutment to, when it spans more than 20 feet.
Okay.
And when it spans more than 20 feet on a township road, it becomes the county's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. This 337-130 I failed to mention, that's also a big funded project as well. 272-030, this is a, another big funded project that we did this spring. BX Civil completed that one. On a township road, this would have been southwest, southeast of Dell Rapids, about five miles on 247th Street. 50-197-100, this project was bid with 330-26. They're both big funded projects. They're both bridge deck overlays. The contract was let to allow construction either in '24 or '25. The contractor elected to do 330-26 in '24 and 197-100 in '25. 208-130 and 290-131 are construction projects that are being led by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. They are using federal funds and the DOT is administering those projects. This project kicked off last week, and they also expect to have this one done before winter. And then 290-131 is, the contractor was given the two-year option, and they decided to move into 2025 with that one. This is what our projects look for, look like for our five-year plan. These are just the projects shown in construction. So on this spreadsheet, the white up here is construction and the blue is design. So we will design projects, one, two, or three years, we'll start the design before construction. But this, this map only shows construction. So the green is what we'd be planning to do next year. We have the bridge on County Highway 104, the Dell Rapids exit, that we're paying for in-house because it's a major trucking route, and we don't want that, that road to get posted. And then we have the surfacing down here, south of Colton, to finish up that County Highway 149 project.
That one's been in the works for quite a while, hasn't it? It's kind of like the Sioux City project.
My project number for it is MC 1710, so we started designing in 2017 for it.
Yeah, okay.
And then the south, the south section of road here was built in 2016 and 2017. So yeah, similar to...
I'm sure everybody out there will be happy to see it done.
I think they will be.
Yeah.
Yes. This structure, 087-120 is another big funded project. We are going to let that this fall along with this one and plan to get those replaced next year. They'll probably still be given a two-year option on this one. This one is on a county road, and we'll just, we want to have it replaced next year. But those are, those are what we have planned for 2025. Past 2025, things can move around a little bit depending on how, what the market looks like, how bids are coming in on other projects. Maybe we want to shift to a different style of work. But 2025 is, these are the projects we're doing next year. I don't know how well you can read these, but if you have specific questions on these, I've printed these out in a larger format as well, so that these can be read. But these top four projects would be the ones that I just went through there in the green. And then below that, we have our annual painting that we do on our county highways, crack sealing, and then we've planned to do chip sealing and cold-in-place recycling next year for our pavement management. And in the blue, we have design projects for next year include three, three different One of them locally funded and two of them funded by big PE grants, professional engineering grants. And then the fourth item on there is to design various culvert replacements based on the inspections that our culvert interns did this year. We will, we will design culvert replacements to be replaced in 2026. And I can go through all these projects if you, if you'd like me to, or just kind of go over the more expensive ones. In 2026, our major expenditure is going to be three bridges that we are, that we're looking at, and then some construction possibly on County Highway 151, south of Hartford. That road is getting in tough shape and needs to be, and needs to be repaired. And then we have on here potentially building out the phase two of the county highway facility, a smaller, smaller than what the existing facility is there, just a shed to make sure we get everything covered from the rain and the snow. And then in design, we have planned for four, four bridges. We try to, we try to have about three or four bridges in design every year just to keep up with the amount of posted structures that we have in our township roads. In 2027, we start adding projects in here just to make sure we have them in here in case these bridges fail, so we can fund them for big grants. Three of these are preservation projects that we're going to apply for from the DOT. You've probably seen the DOT on Interstate 229 around Sioux Falls. They've, they've applied a black surfacing to, to the highway. It's a, it's to prevent slippage when it gets icy. And then in our instance, it's more used for sealing the deck, so we don't get a lot of chlorides and, and water and salt in our bridge to break it down. On the bottom here, this purple is our Bridge Improvement Program grant. We would be proposing to start designing 2027 for that. In 2028, the, the biggest project on here is going to be regrading a section of County Highway 103 north of Sherman. And then there's almost $6 million in here for Maple Park. Now, at this time, that project will only get funded if it's funded through a, a RACE Grant or some sort of federal, federal funds. As you can see from the budget, we don't have the capital in house to pay for that project right now. And then there's more design down here for Maple Park as well. And then in 2029, this would be the year of construction for the Bridge Improvement Program grant. So those three structures east of Dell Rapids really bumped the budget up quite a bit that year. And then various bridges in, in design as well. I will leave a, a comment sheet back there at the sign-in, along with a sign-in sheet. If anybody has comments, my email address is on there, and I would appreciate if you would email those to me, or you can just hand them to me here in person. But if you wouldn't mind signing the attendance sheet, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. So we have two actions here. We have a public hearing to brief on the Bridge Improvement Plan, and then we'll move into the five-year transportation plan that includes this. Is that correct? Am I missing?
That is correct. So then, yes.
Okay. So we'll start with proponents for the Bridge Improvement Plan as presented by Jacob. Anybody from the public here want to speak as a proponent to the Bridge Improvement Plan? All right. Any opponents? All right. Move on then to commission. Any questions from the commission on the Bridge Improvement Plan? Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. Have you been around long enough to see the beginning of this five-year plan? When did we start doing this as a county, and how long has the state been requiring it?
Oh, when did the, I am not sure which year the big program started. Oh, I'm not sure. I want to say sometime around 2013.
Okay.
Somewhere around, sometime around there. What's that?
2014.
2014.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate it. I think it's helpful for us to be able to see how you're planning ahead and how, while you do budgeting for upcoming expenses and trying to maintain the roads. I think our county roads are by and large in very good shape, so I appreciate all of that work.
Thank you.
How many bridges do you manage?
There's 197. In the last couple of years, we've removed two. We haven't, we haven't just gone out and deleted waterways, but we have minimized the, either the width of the structure or made it into two separate structures where it no longer qualifies as a bridge, but 197.
197. How many culverts?
A lot more than that.
Okay.
Thousands.
How many, how many road miles?
There are...
Southern miles?
347.
Okay. Road miles, so 340 and 97, okay, so.
197.
197.
Yep.
Outstanding. Okay. What's the guess on the Maple Park project? I mean, is this our third time to the plate with that project?
It is. It's our third time to the plate with that project. As far as the construction cost, we are working through 60% design right now, which is a jointly funded project between the city of Sioux Falls, city of Brandon, and then Split Rock Township is also helping fund that. That is going to be completed here in December. We'll have a really good idea what our cost estimate's going to be after that. I don't know that we've adjusted it well for inflation since our last design, and now we're looking at raising that bridge. I don't know if you're aware, but the Maple Park Bridge over there was, was flooded in 2019, and then it was also flooded again this June when we had that water event. So we believe it would be necessary to get that out of the water as well.
Yeah.
So with the bridge, probably around 23 million total between Sioux Falls' portion, our portion, city of Brandon's portion.
Wow, okay. I've got another question if nobody else does. Okay. Can you scroll back to the chart that goes from '25 through '29, is it, the total spending? There. I mean, we're spending expenses, '25, almost 18 million, a little over 18 million in '26, and then '27, we take a big drop and jump back up in '28. It just is, to me, an anomaly. What, what's going on in '27 that we're reducing construction expenses by that much and then jumping back up so much the next year?
Yeah, good question. So in '25 and '26, we have, in 2025, we have internally a large bridge project that we're funding on County Highway 104, which is over a million dollars, along with a couple of grants from the DOT. So that's what increases our, our budget in '17. '25 and '26, those are grant-funded projects that are boosting that. In '27, most of that funding is, is localized or on smaller structures. And then '28, this is where we show our, I think the, one's the Bridge Improvement Program and the other one's the RACE Grant. The Bridge Improvement Program funding is in 2029, and the RACE Grant, Maple Park, is in 2028.
Oh, so Maple Park's part, okay.
Yep. And in these later years, in '28 and '29, it's really throwing darts at a dartboard, trying to...
You got to have a plan.
Trying to make a good estimate of what's going to happen. And then we work with our, our bridge inspector, CDI out of Brookings, to come up with structures that we, he feels like could degrade quicker than expected, and we might need to have in here to apply for grants.
All righty, okay. Any other questions on this? Commissioner Kipley?
Just going to ask you to walk us through the, the cycle time, the, the time that we'll be applying for the big grants. Isn't that usually in the early calendar year, and we get the results of it in the spring? Is that?
Yes.
Because some, just to clarify to you, some of these already list as, as awarded, and some of them are anticipated grants, so I, I'm guessing we're going to be most interested in the anticipated grants and this, applying for those this next cycle?
We are, yes. There are a couple of different application pieces and deadlines. The deadline for these two projects right here, big, big PEs, I think it's August 1st is when those are due. And then there is an application for, on this 20, so 197-100 and 330-26, we didn't replace those bridges, we just rehabbed them. The pre-rehab applications are due October, September 1st. I think it's September 1st. And then we go through a consultation with the DOT, and they tell us if we have a good plan or we need to change it. And then the actual application for the rehab projects or preservation projects, and then the, the full replacement projects are due at the first of the year. And we find out the awards, it, it changes a little bit every year, but generally around the end of March.
And then just to follow up on that, we did make an adjustment to our wheel tax to get the full five points. Is that, does my memory serve me correctly, or we haven't acted on that yet?
We have not done anything with that.
Okay, so we'd get $4 equals four points still.
We currently, we currently receive four points for our wheel tax.
Okay. All right. And then my last question, is this the only public hearing, or did you all have anything out in the, in the community for public hearings on this topic?
Yeah, so it would, it was advertised to the townships as well for them to come in, to the highway department to come, to come and visit about it. Jen actually attended that meeting this year. She was the only one that came to that meeting this year. Generally, in the past, we have between two and seven township personnel that attended, but just with the timing of it this year, Jen was the only one that showed up.
The few and the proud, so that's good. Thanks for being there, Commissioner. That's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
All right. So no action on this item, but then we do move to consider a motion to approve the five-year transportation plan in accordance with the Bridge Improvement Grant fund requirements by signing the attached certification form.
Yep, and this is the certification form that the commission concurs with what the highway department has provided as our five-year plan.
All right. Public comment on this item. Okay. Commission discussion, action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. It doesn't say roll call vote, but do I need a roll call vote on this one? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Moving on then, consider a motion to approve amendments to Section 1514, parking to the Minnehaha County Employee Handbook. Morning, Tom.
Good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. I briefed you on this last week. I'll just provide a quick recap. I'm going to get to the map here quickly. So the purpose of this is to make some minor changes to our employee parking, basically map and our, our policy. This sprung primarily from the fact that this past summer, Parking Lot C was redone. We did lose a few parking spots there. So in the course of evaluating what to do about that situation, we did take a broader look at parking in general. So just want to highlight what this policy change does specifically is it makes Parking Lot C a permit-only lot. In the past, it was public and permit, public two hours. This would restrict it to just permit. I do want to remind folks that we still have a public-only lot just to the west here, and certainly there's on-street parking around the entire complex, along with public parking in Lot A and also here in Lot H and other various points on the county campus. The other change that was included in this particular policy is just clarifying parking here in Lot E. By practice, blue and red permits have been authorized, but that is not specifically what the map reflected. So the map's been updated to show that this is public and employee parking here behind the courthouse as well. Some other minor changes, Lot I was converted from a red and blue parking permit pass only to basically any color permit. That would generally allow any overflow greens from Lot C to park over here in Lot I. And in addition to those changes, there was one minor change that clarifies the process for issuing temporary parking permits to employees who have some sort of medical, medical condition that requires them to close park, park closer to the building without the need for a state accessible pass. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Public comment on this agenda item. All right, commission questions? Action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. We are done with our regular agenda. We have the opportunity for public comment. Public has five minutes. We have a total of 30 minutes, and we ask just for your name and your county of residence on the back sign-up sheet. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jean Childs. I live in Lincoln County. In a well-known department store in Sioux Falls, this sign is clearly posted. Shoplifting is stealing. Shoplifting is stealing. It is not a prank, a joke, or a thrill. It's a crime. We will prosecute to the fullest extent of the law. Please don't risk it. We, the people, do not want our votes shoplifted. Please don't risk it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is a taxpaying citizen of Minnehaha County. As it is, it is not possible to attend your meetings during work hours. I have asked this person to stand in my place.
We do need you to state your name.
Why does this commission feel they are no longer responsible to answer to the public? I have watched many of these recorded meetings and have seen citizens get up and ask legitimate questions only to be met with silent, blank stares. It has been three weeks now since Auditor Anderson was accused of breaking the law and yet there has been no mention or forthcoming of what law or laws she is breaking. That is a serious charge to state at a public meeting with a local news crew there to report on. My name is Gary Meyer. I have had many conversations with people with these same legitimate concerns. Not only do I sympathize with these people, I can't answer their concerns. We have a commissioner that boldly stated that the auditor is breaking the law, is incompetent, is not credible, is an idiot, does not follow the rules, and needs to resign. And if she doesn't, he will ask for budget revisions to cover the inedible litigation, which has not been done, all while providing no proof of any laws being broken. And as I stated last week, the rest of you have remained silent, including the state's attorneys. Now, Mr. Kipley may be protected under the First Amendment, but as a public official, he needs to be held accountable if these are false accusations. And the fact that the rest of you remain silent is just appalling. Why are you covering for him? What are you covering? Is everybody on this board compromised or is it just a power thing? After all, power makes intelligent people do stupid things. So I ask once again, what laws has the auditor broken? Either present the information or take disciplinary action and issue a public statement saying as much. Destroying a person's credibility and influencing public opinion by abusing your power as a commissioner is unforgivable. So let's start with a yes/no question. Has the auditor broken any laws? It's time for Mr. Kipley to offer up some more of his moral clarity. Anybody? Has the auditor broken any laws? Deputy State's Attorney? Chairperson Karski? Or are you going to use the out-of-order wildcard again and tell me to sit down? Because you don't engage with public, with the people that elected you, has the auditor broken any laws as Mr. Kipley has charged? It's sad that you allow Leah's, Leah's character and good name to be slandered because you're too afraid to say something or because you don't agree with the way she's doing her job. And that includes the state's attorney, Daniel Hager, who pretty much pleaded the fifth when I quartered him last week after the meeting. Let me remind you that falsely destroying the character of an elected official is election interference. And I remind you of Executive Order 13848 that was presented to you last week. Those involved in unscrupulous behavior will be sought out, caught, and prosecuted at levels unfortunately never seen before in our country. So has Leah broken any laws? Yes or no? It's been three weeks. You publicly stated in front of the camera that she has broken laws. Has she? Don't look at me like you don't know what I'm talking about. You're the one that said it. Oh, yes, you do. You know exactly what I'm talking about. You said she's not credible, she's an idiot, she does not follow the rules, she's incompetent, and she has broken the law, which you were going to pad the budget to prepare for. Was that just a public statement to get your way, to slander her character? Home rule didn't work. You got to figure out another way to get her out of office. This is, this is despicable. And you sit there and stare at me. Yeah, you, Dean. You should know better. Has she broken any laws? It's been three weeks and you've been in executive sessions. Jean? You only got two months left. You might as well speak up now. So you don't engage with the public. You neither. Pretty disappointed, Dean. That you cover for him over there. And you just laugh. I'm pretty really disappointed in that, too. Yeah.
I find you very genuine. So let's get on with it, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm. I've still got 13 seconds left. I'm waiting for some moral clarity. Do you have morals? At least you didn't call me out of order.
Good morning. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. Last week at the September 24th meeting, we have Mr. Bennega asking the deputies about a gun. Was that just a harmless question? I find it to be rather threatening. Months back, Jessica and I had a conversation with Mr. Bennega in the hall after a meeting where we had once again presented election information during public comment time. Mr. Bennega told me to my face, I don't even listen to you anymore. After the September 10th commission meeting, I approached the commission desk to talk to Mr. Kipley. Not much was shared other than Mr. Kipley called me an alien from another planet and in fact said all of you in South Dakota canvassing are like aliens from another planet. A couple of months ago, I was told to my face after a commission, commission meeting by Chairman Karski that we, South Dakota canvassing, will never be allowed on the agenda to, to discuss elections. The fire in the eyes of Mr. Karski as he made that comment was very visible and a bit frightening to see. During the commission meeting on September 24th, I received a text message saying that the livestream was down. So I went over to the commission office to inquire. In the commission office was a deputy, but I proceeded to ask my question. The deputy left after I did. Then another question came to mind, so I went back into the commission office and the deputy followed me back in, into that office to again listen to the conversation. It was very visible, the amount of law enforcement/deputies in the building for the September 24th meeting, where some of the deputies called in after the commissioner saw the room full of patriots. When elections are on the agenda and the people get up to speak, the deputies will be standing in the doorways. While on the September 24th meeting, elections weren't on the agenda, but the room was filled with patriots. So did another deputy get a call to let their presence, did other deputies get a call to let their presence be seen? In today's climate where the fake news media is labeling conservatives as a crazy folk and everyone should be scared of us because that's the narrative being spread. However, after last week's comments about a gun by Mr. Bennega, whether serious or in fun, it was threatening. Asking for a gun should never be a funny comment. Speaking out at a commission meeting was intimidating when we started down this journey three years ago. I don't recall deputies standing in the doorways. However, the three or four of us that were coming to those meetings and speaking ups were treated with respect. We could have civil conversations with you after the meetings, but that's not the environment today. The commission meetings have become a hostile environment. Is it any wonder why new folks won't stand up and voice their concerns? The deputies are standing in the doorways, that are standing in the doorways swore an oath to protect the people. And after last week's comment about a gun, I now feel a sense of relief knowing the deputies are here to protect me from you. Because of the comments made to my face by Commissioner Bennega, Kipley, and Karski, I call for the resignation of each of you. If you can't listen to or talk to the people without these outbursts of anger, then you are not fit for the office and you all need to resign. We are your constituents. How shameful that you treat us in this fashion.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to move on to commission liaison reports. Anybody attend the Southeast District meeting last week? You did, Commissioner?
Yes.
Any report on that?
Thanks for the reminder. I was just going to scramble for my phone to see where we had been. The Southeast District meeting was held in Lenox, Lincoln County hosted. There was good turnout from many counties. We had a couple of state legislators there in attendance, so that was great to be able to have them join us for the commissioner roundtable to be able to share some of the things, points of interest for counties with those state representatives. I think that sums it up.
All righty. Other commission liaison reports?
Mr. Chair, I can just mention that we had our planning and zoning meeting last week. We discussed the last stages of the comprehensive plan, looking out to 2045 is kind of the, the vision on that now. That we'll have some public sessions in, I believe Hartford, Del Rapids, and Brandon in November. And then also we'll have a, Scott Anderson will give a presentation on the comprehensive plan in, I think, November 12th to our commission meeting with the idea that we'd incorporate public feedback and adopt that comprehensive plan for our planning department in, early in 2025. So that's been almost probably a year in the works already. It's probably an 18-month vision to, to get all of that consolidated together. A couple of different task forces that have worked on density zoning and some other concepts. So pretty happy with the way that's coming together, but more to come in November. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Last week I attended the Chamber of Commerce Sioux Falls area chamber, or Greater Sioux Falls area Chamber of Commerce monthly board meeting. They're in transition. Leadership changes today. They have their annual meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. REO speedwagon for us older generation, don't laugh. Might be interested in attending. So Miles Beacom is the incoming chair of the chamber. They're looking forward to a good year. We do have a very good working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce and it's good to keep that ongoing. So moving on to non-action commission discussion. I've got a couple of things. Law enforcement present at meetings has always been a thing. In fact, city council has several law enforcement officers. We have law enforcement officers here to brief us on different fundings. It might be a captain, might be a sergeant. We do have now a law enforcement present in the building 24, I'm sorry, during all operations of the, of the building here. And it's because we have hundreds of employees in this building and we also have a lot of the public come in. So law enforcement is for the safety of the employees, for the public, for the elected officials. So it's not new. It's maybe stepped up by one officer just because we thought in today's environment, it would be best to have a greater present in the, presence in the building. So yes, there is law enforcement here and it's, it's for everybody's safety. Other non-action commission discussion, I, I am going to bring up right now that the 2020 ballots were mentioned before and we, I personally went to the auditor and asked her if she wanted to open those boxes that she needed to request it. We don't own the boxes. We have to ask the courts if the boxes, the election ballots can be opened. And a request was given to Leah that if she would like the ballot boxes to be open, that it would have to come as a request to the commission so that we could then request a judge that they be unsealed. That request never came to us. I don't know if the auditor is presenting that information to the group that supports her, but we haven't received a request. So we did not request from the courts that that be done. So it's all I got. Any other non-action commission discussion? All right. We have no executive session today, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.